I'd like to call this meeting of the Windsocket City Council to order for Monday, October 3rd, 2022. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Here.
Don't you speak through the mic anymore?
Councilman Gillette?
Yes!
Thank you.
How's that?
Councilman Gillette, Councilwoman Sierra?
Here.
Councilman Susie?
Here.
Councilman Ward?
Here.
President Gendron?
Here. We do have a quorum. If you could please stand for the prayer and the pledge.
God our Father, we ask that you send your blessing upon this city and upon this council. Guide us in our efforts, increase our motivation, and strengthen our resolve to build a better community and ensure a brighter future for the city of Windsocket. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda was for a public hearing, but that public hearing is not going to be held tonight. It will be held at the next regularly scheduled meeting on October 17th. So if there is anyone here that was coming to address anything at that public hearing, please know that that will be postponed until the next regular meeting. Moving on to the agenda for Board of Licensed Commissioners.
Twenty-two L.C. 37, Application of Licenses and Renewal of Licenses.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the following licenses: new licenses, claf ephlus liquor license with entertainment, also renewals for quarterly entertainment and rooming house.
Motion made by Councilman Gillette.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and twenty-two L.C. 37 is approved, seven to zero. If I could have a motion to table, for tabling of twenty-two L.C. 36, which is the item that pertains to the public hearing for this evening?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Susie, to table twenty-two L.C. 36. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and twenty-two L.C. 36 is tabled, seven to zero. Moving on to public comment. I would ask if there's anyone here that would like to address the city council, that you please approach the podium, state your name and address for the clerk, adjust the microphone so that we can hear you, and please keep your comments to under five minutes, and obviously in good taste.
Always in good taste.
You are, Director.
So, I'm Stephen D'Agostino, One Tabor Hill Road, North Smithfield, Rhode Island. Don't come unannounced. But I'm also Director of Public Works for the city of Windsocket. So I'm just gonna speak very briefly about tomorrow night's hearing. That hasn't happened yet, but obviously I'm opposed to the removal of Mayor Baldelli Hunt. Not only do I think that she's an excellent mayor, but she's a dear friend, okay? And I know it hasn't happened yet, and there's no testimony, and I know that the, you know, the charges were brought before you, so you're gonna hear them, but I just wanna say that I condemn her removal, okay? I don't think it's the right thing to do. I think it would be short-sighted. I think it would cause division in the city, unnecessary division. There's already enough division in the country you don't need in the city, right? So I think it causes confusion amongst the directors and workers. And in reality, she comes back, she's unopposed, and that's rarely the forum to remove her, isn't the election. People tried four times, they were unsuccessful, okay? So much so that she's unopposed for the fifth, in the fifth election, and she'll be elected November 8th and sworn in December 6th. So as I say, it's stressful as a worker here. It's, you know, it gets in the way of everyday progress because it's always talked about. It's just, you know, it's an unnecessary consequence, in my opinion. I mean, I'm not saying there's no, you know, you don't have reason to have differences. I'm sure she has her differences with you, I'm sure you with her, but I'm just saying the removal is not the right thing. So if I, I guess I'm appealing to the people who haven't decided yet. That's what I'm, that's what I'm really doing, okay? And for those of you who haven't made up your mind, I'm urging you not to take this route. I'm, you know, sixty-five as of Saturday. I think I have some wisdom, and I don't think this is the way to go, okay? It's not productive to the city, and like I say, in eight or nine weeks, she's back anyway. She's back, and some of you might not be here, okay? So it's, it's really, in my opinion, a huge distraction to the flow of government, okay? And that's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
And happy birthday.
Only sixty-five?
Sixty-five, yeah.
That's it?
Well, dog years.
Dog years.
Chris Bochamp, thirty-seven Meadow Road, Windsocket. I'll be brief also. I'm gonna echo what the director said, and I understand why the council is taking this hearing tomorrow. It is in the charter. But I too believe, despite what some of you may believe, I think it's a big disruption to the city also. And I just think that, you know, we're gonna do something for a short period of time that's gonna really impact not only the workers in the city, but the taxpayers in the city. The amount of money we're gonna spend on legal representation, both for you and the council and the mayor, which you deserve, both of you, I think is a waste of time. If there was another opponent running against the mayor, I believe that, you know, it may have some validity to it, but there is not. So I just hope cooler heads prevail, and that's on both sides, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council?
I speak into the mic. Can you hear me? I'm sorry if you can't. I got a question. When you put a flag at half, half thing, is it supposed to have a light on it? If it is, the one in Windsocket City Hall does not have a light on the flag. But I don't know these things, so, 'cause I've never been in the service. But that's about it. The other thing is, I couldn't find a thing that goes over my ears, but maybe that's another thing for my civil rights thing that I went to the city, I went to Providence for, against the city council about my city rights of people speaking into the mic. I'm sick of it, and I'm not gonna put up with it anymore. If I see somebody that's not speaking into the mic, I'm gonna stand up, and I'm gonna try to walk to them before they can hea, I can hear what they're saying. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Uh, motion to accept with the exception of, bear with me. Let's see, hang on a second. Twenty-two C.O. seventy-seven from the planning department.
Motion made to accept the consent agenda with the exception of twenty-two O. Seventy, C.O. seventy-seven.
Second.
Motion made by the Councilwoman Canoia, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez and Councilman Ward. Any other items to be taken up separately?
I didn't hear one. Can Canoia repeat what he said? I didn't hear.
Motion, motion to accept with the exception of twenty-two C.O. seventy-seven, the planning department's report. You're welcome.
Any other items to be taken up separately? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is received as presented with the exception of twenty-two C.O. seventy-seven. Do we have a motion to receive twenty-two C.O. seventy-seven?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments? Councilman Canoia?
Yes. Director, thank you for this. A couple of quick questions. Looks like two people have left. You said the federal administrator of programs and grants has resigned to take a higher pay, and then the lead program manager has resigned also to take a higher pay. Do you have the amounts that they were making with the city and what they're making with the, their new employment?
They did, no, I do not.
Okay. And then the other question is, says the department has hired a code enforcement coordinator with the building inspection division. What does a code enforcement officer do?
That was our minimum housing that has been renamed into code enforcement, broadened their job descriptions and what they do for the city.
So what do they do if somebody violates a minimum housing ordinances and so forth?
Correct.
And what do we do if they violate that? You issue them a summons and they go to a hearing?
They're in, our department's in municipal court every Wednesday with a number of properties that have code violations.
All right. So if they don't follow the code of ordinance, they get a summons, they come for a hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Just like to add, the code enforcer that was hired today did not show up. He ended up taking a job with higher money.
Do you know how much that money was?
No, I just, that was.
You just know it's higher.
We had him all set. He was here last week and sent an email this morning, declining. They got offered another position with more money.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments regarding twenty-two C.O. seventy-seven?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
Director, the, I see at the back end of this is a report on the redevelopment agency, and I wanna thank you for that. It's very informative. It does raise a couple of questions for me, and I, maybe we can get an answer to. I noticed on their agenda for last Thursday, there was going to be a closed session to discuss acquisition of property.
Yes, sir.
And seeing as is evidenced here that they don't have any funds to expend, I'm trying to figure, and I don't expect you'll disclose what property we're talking about. I'm assuming it would have to be in a redevelopment area, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out how they're considering acquiring property with no funds, and the fact that your report points out that they have to, they have to really start developing a strategic plan, and they're going to be working on that. I'm assuming a strategic plan is designed around taking the redevelopment areas that have been designated and determine what the plan is for those areas or what they hope to do, and that each one of them is identified as having some beneficial outcome associated with whatever their plan is, and would identify the necessary resources to do that? Is that what we're talking about them doing?
Yes, that strategic plan was about last year, I think, when Bianca was the director, that they had started to talk about that, and they didn't proceed on it with the change in the chairperson, the vice chair, and then the executive directors, so executive director. So that hadn't been actually started, so it will now start, and we're looking to put a grant in to help us with that, so we can hire a consultant to lead us through that process.
And I know that one particular area was added as a redevelopment area back in 2014. Quite frankly, I don't think it was ever expressed in the documentation why that area was particularly chosen or what the goals were, but the council approved it, and so it became part of it. However, I do want to remain optimistic and hopeful, because the last sentence in your report says the, or two sentences say, "It is the intention before the finalization of the strategic plan that the redevelopment agency will present it to the administration for any revisions or amendments. The redevelopment agency will then request a work session with the city council for discussion and review." Well, I've been on this council since 1995, except for five years in an interim period, but I don't believe the redevelopment agency ever met with the council. So for the first time in eighteen, seventeen years, I will be thrilled.
Well, I wasn't the director back then, so.
I know you weren't.
This is how we will proceed.
Thrilled with the idea of meeting with the redevelopment agency, to have a conversation about what are some very large tracts of land that are designated as redevelopment areas, and talk about what can be done with them and what their planning says they would hope for. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate, and I really appreciate this report. It's, it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Any other comments regarding twenty-two C.O. seventy-seven? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the approval and correction of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 12th, the special meeting held September 19th, and the special meeting held September 27th.
Motion approved?
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Gillette. Are there any items to change, corrections, deletions, anything to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the meeting, the minutes from the meetings held September 12th, September 19th, and September 27th are approved unanimously, seven to zero. Moving on to presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrances.
Twenty-two P. Thirty-five, a request of Charles Lamoyne to address the city council regarding senior center double door replacement bid number six oh eight two.
I'm still speaking into the mic. My eighty-four Shosha Street is supposed to be something about double doors. Is it in the front or in the back that's gonna be, is there anybody here from the ADA to let us know? I'm speaking about it. I should have somebody answering me, right? I put this in ahead of time.
Well, all it says is the senior center double door replacement bid.
Yeah, all right.
I would think that, no, no, but Mr. Lamoyne, you said, is there anyone here from ADA? That's not what it says.
It says ADA on here.
But Mr. Lamoyne, it references senior center double door replacement bid six oh eight two, and I believe Director DeBryce is prepared to speak on it.
Okay. God, well, what about it? What are they doing to it? What are they doing to the double doors?
So through the council, that bid was put out through our office, and after the bid was put out, there was no bidders for it. So it was put down until we can decide what we need to do next. I can't force a company to bid on a project. We tried the best we could. We even went back to the same company that did the, the most recent work for the side entry on top of the ramp, and at that, at this time, the companies are not interested with the extra work. Maybe that comes, changes come next year, but at this time, nobody is interested in the work.
So who's doing the work on it right now?
That, that double door is not an ADA access. The ADA access has a ramp that goes off to the side and also in the front of the building.
Well, the front of the building don't have a door that opens by itself, and it's always locked.
And that's why the side entrance was constructed and is, and is accessible.
So can I give this to the city council?
Sure.
There's nine pictures there that I took today, and the cement that's on the walkways and the new handicap area they built still have cracks in it. Why? If nobody's working on it, why do they have cracks in it? They got all new tar. They got paint around the, some of the areas where the cracks are, but they don't have cement there. Why?
Council President?
I would like to know.
Director, please.
I just wanna make it very clear that that building is ADA compliant. We just, the city spent quite a great deal of money to make sure that all our residents and all the seniors get into the building on the ramp. The doors are ADA compliant.
One.
The building is ADA compliant, Mr. Lamoyne, and that was what we needed to do, and it was done, and I wanna thank everybody that took part in taking, making sure that happened.
So I guess I gotta call Providence or Providence and to see how their ADA come out and look at it, because it's not, you see the cracks in the bill, in the floor, ground, right? And the other thing is, the bathrooms are not ADA. She says it's, the building is ADA. The bathrooms are not ADA for the men's room. I didn't go in the ladies' room, you know, I don't think I belong there, to check it. Somebody else can check that, I guess. So let me finish.
Council President?
Director, please.
We do have ADA compliant restrooms.
No, you don't. You can't get in the door to the ba, to the toilet for, with a chair. You cannot get into the door. It's not wide enough. It's gotta be thirty-six inches. It is not thirty-six inches.
Okay. I don't know, I'm taking.
I'm telling you, you know, the rules, you know. I got books at home. You want me to burn them in? I can burn them in and start reading, or hold on?
No, 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 but, but it's, you having a book doesn't tell me, I don't, I'm not.
But it comes from ADA.
I'm sorry?
Comes from the American disability people.
Okay.
It comes from Boston. It comes from Providence. You know, I don't make these books.
So, Councilman?
Director D'Agostino?
Yeah, so how many seniors do you estimate use that facility?
Me?
No. Oh, make a guess.
I don't think that's on the paper.
I'm not, I'm talking to the councilman. I'm not talking to you.
Oh, thank you.
I don't think it's on the paper. I got the place to talk right, right now, right?
Yes, yep.
So it should be me, not him.
Director, we'll, we'll let him finish up.
Okay.
Thank you.
It says ADA compliance, double door, with one American door opener, but it does, it says at the rear of the exit entrance. Well, the rear doesn't have an ADA door on it yet, so how are they doing it? What are they doing to it? I asked, when I got this, I asked to see when, when would it be finished? There's no paper on here saying when it's gonna be finished.
Well, I think Director DeBryce made that clear, that nobody bid on doing the work.
Then who's doing the work? Last week, the sidewalks was all broken up. This week, the sidewalks have tile on them.
If you'll let me answer, the city repaired the sidewalk. The city repaired the sidewalk that was broken last week. I'm the one who put the bid out for the, for the doors, because I was asked to, okay, by some people that frequent that facility. So I thought it was a great idea. So I, along with Director DeBryce, put the bid out. Now, nobody bid on it, so, which means.
But the stuff is getting done. Who's doing it?
You want me to speak, or you're gonna just keep speaking? Because if you're gonna speak, I'm done. I'm not talking to you.
I'm gonna talk again and again and again, but you wanna talk, talk.
You know what? I'm done.
Thank you. I still didn't hear my answer. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing. Where's the things for my hearing aids? Up here. They ain't over there anymore. I don't know where they are.
I'll look for them. Mr. Lamoyne, they've always been in this room, so someone obviously placed them somewhere else. We'll make sure they're here for the next meeting.
Council President?
Councilman Canoia?
I make a motion to add the following items to the agenda for discussion purposes only pursuant to Rhode Island general law forty-two, forty-six, six B. Number one, the local eight oh eight police contracts covering July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022, and July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024, and the status of payments thereunder. And number two, property taxes.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia to add to the agenda for the discussion purposes only.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Councilman Canoia?
Just briefly, the police contract, have the payments been made under the new contract that was executed? Is that no, yes?
No.
No, okay. Solicitor, I'm gonna ask you again, and I apologize, but again, I think you have, pretty sure you have a law degree and a license to practice law in the city and in the state of Rhode Island.
Yes.
And you have, do we have a legal and binding contract?
Yes.
Okay. And attorneys, generally speaking, some of them specialize in certain areas such as medical malpractice, criminal defense, real estate. Is it safe to say that you've dabbled a little bit in your career, both as a lawyer and at the General Assembly? You have a little bit of knowledge of labor law?
Yes.
Yes. And I've heard there's some differences of opinions between you and the mayor on the legality of this contract. Have you, and I don't wanna know specifics, but have you vetted this issue, talked formally or informally to other attorneys in the state or people you know, and you're comfortable with your position?
I'm absolutely comfortable with my position.
Absolutely comfortable. Has the mayor ever given you anything tangible to suggest that you're wrong, provided you?
No, no.
Okay. And you've instructed Ms. Johnson on a couple occasions that you've ruled on this and that we have a binding contract and it should be paid?
Yes.
Okay. But it's not been paid, okay. And lastly, just as a, am I reading this correctly? The city charter, the city solicitor, that's you, the guy with the law license and the law degree, not Jim Canoia, not Councilman Susie, not the mayor, the solicitor, it says the solicitor shall decide all questions and controversies relative to the legal construction of any and all laws and ordinances affecting the city as well as the city charter, and the division of powers and duties created or implied therein. Is that from the charter?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. Second thing is, way back on September 12th, we talked about property taxes. We had a number of people here that were up in arms about their property tax increases, and I specifically said that night on September 12th that I'd like the data in Excel format that would show current, current assessment, prior assessment, number of units and all that type of stuff. I sent a follow-up email the very next morning to the Director of Finance. I said, quote, "As discussed last night, please provide me an Excel format, all the property tax data specifically. I want to file, I wanna file that provides at least the following: property address, property class, current assessment, prior assessment, any exemptions such as homeside." Thanks, Jim. That was on September 13th, the morning after. And then later that week, on Friday, we did receive, and I thank you, an email from Elise Parry, and she provided two separate Excel files, one for 2022, one for 2021. I then spoke, just to be clear to everybody, I then spoke directly to Ms. Parry and said, "This is great, but it's not really responsive to what I wanted, because I can't do a comparison, the current versus the prior," because you got two separate files, different number of units of the whole nine yards. It also didn't include a very clear explanation of the type of property. It has a state class code, but I never got the decoder ring for that, you know, class one, class two, class three, with no explanation as to what that means, is multiple classes with no decoder ring. And I spoke to Ms. Parry, and she said she was gonna put the, should merge the files together to address that, because again, when I or any other taxpayer goes out to vision, here's my property. I look up the, I look up my property both on the bill pay and on the assessment piece, and it tells me exactly how many, you know, how many units is a single family, two family, three family. It gives me my current assessment, my prior assessment, et cetera. I, the data is there, it's, it's all available, and she indicated she would put something together. And as of tonight, October 3rd, we've got nothing. And I know you sent us an email a week ago that suggested that they were gonna merge the files, so I hope I get that, and I'm just saying this because I know people are anxious about what are we doing? We said we'd look at this and do something, and frankly, we just don't have the data yet, even though we've been assured we'd be getting it soon. So.
I am going to, I'm sorry, I'm gonna speak to Ms. Parry tomorrow. She's actually coming in the office.
Excellent, okay.
So I'll talk to her about that.
And again, I spoke to her, and she understood what I was looking for. She indicated she would be able to do it. Feel free to call me when she comes in if there's any, any issue, because again, we did indicate we would look at this, and frankly, I'm gonna say it again, I've said it to a number of people, but we'll look at the data. I think I know what's going on, frankly, but I'm, I'm not sure what we do about it at the end of the day, but that's, that's step two. The first one, first step is to fully understand what's going on with the assessments. I heard a child on WNRI indicating it's because we changed vendors, and they'll investigate that at some point, but it's got nothing to do with that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to.
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
If I may, I had asked the council to allow me to bring, have for discussion. If I may, I had asked the council to allow me to bring, uh, have for discussion purposes only an item related to the Oak Grove Development Phase Three in accordance with the restrictions of State General Law forty-two, 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 forty-six, six B.
Motion made by Councilman Ward to add to the agenda for discussion purposes only.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Gillette and Councilman Canoia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Councilman Ward.
Director D'Agostino? Director DeBryce? We had much discussion and with the solicitor involved. Apparently, I, I received or had a communication from a resident who lives in the area of the Phase Three of this development, and they were rather upset that the developer is apparently, though all of the housing units are complete, the lawns are in, everything should be ready to go, the developer has not, um, completed their drainage work, curbing and paving, final paving, and the city hasn't accepted the road yet for either the Lucille Street Extension or Norman Drive, I believe it's called. And our conversation was about what, when, when they would be doing it, but also about the fact that I suggested, you know, companies post bonds when they're doing these developments. This company did, and I note that in twenty, twenty twenty, the bond was reduced to one seventy-eight, two oh one, which I'm assuming was to complete the roadway and the curbing. At that time, though I don't know that all of the housing units were built, I think the only two left were down at the bottom of Lucille Street. And so I have a couple of questions, and feel free to expand on them. But first, do we know that the bond is still valid or has it, could it possibly have expired?
The, the bond is still valid in our office.
Does it have an expiration date?
I can check for you.
I would agree. I only wanna make sure that the bond doesn't expire because I understand, as with all roadwork right now, the, um, the time it takes to get your hands on granite curbing is rather lengthy. At least some have expressed that. Director D'Agostino seems to disagree, but I'll, I'll leave it to him to explain if he wants to when we're finished with this. But, um, you know, and I, I had heard a hint from the person I was speaking with that lives out there that the developer was hoping to go to the planning board and request that they be allowed to replace the granite curbing with concrete curbing, which is totally unacceptable when you consider granite curbing is in the whole development. It was specified, um, and it also deteriorates a lot more rapidly than granite curbing. So I would hope that that's not a valid consideration for the planning board to give any weight to. So I guess the question is, when, how do we go about getting this developer to finish their project?
Well, for this one, good luck. We've been trying for many years to work with the developer. That, that Oak Grove has had four phases, and this particular developer owned Phase Two and Phase Three. As you know from the emails that we just, uh, communicated with, that there's still some legal issues involved with, uh, between the developer and me personally for just trying to do my job and protect the residents out there. But we, we have been pushing. I know the engineering division through Director D'Agostino has been working with them to try to, um, get the curb in. He is saying that the curb in is, um, um, backordered till at least May, and.
No, I'm talking to Linda.
Okay. And, um, yes, he is, um, going in front of the board, the planning board, to ask for a change in material. He is allowed to go there and ask what they decide. Will be up to the planning board.
Well, I for one intend to communicate to them that I hope that they would not accept that because every other street in that development has granite curbing, and that would not be up to the requirements of the development. But to me, that's just a way to try to save some money.
Here's the situation.
Director?
Microphone.
Can you grab the mic?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, uh, here's the situation. A question was asked of me, would I consider concrete curb? Now, I know these people have been very patient, extremely patient, okay? And the situation is, they can't get granite curb till probably next summer, okay? Because there's a lot of contours to it. It's not straight. So it's like custom curb. And this particular developer didn't order it. So by the time he decided to order it, and it'll be next summer, so I guess he can get concrete curb much quicker, okay? So I feel for the residents there. I want them to have a paved road. I want them not to have sandbags in front of their house. So at this point, I, you know, I'd consider anything, concrete, whatever. So I gave it to Mike to entertain, so the planning board can entertain it, okay? And it's not ideal, but if you knew the history of this development.
I read it.
Well, no, you, you didn't read it. You read us, like a, a fraction of it.
Oh, I read the letters from the attorneys too.
Altercations, there's been threats, there's been, I sent Mike so many times out there that this guy personally wants to sue him for harassment, okay? And the solicitor can attest to that. So much so that I'd like the Solicitor's Department to send every resident over their letter telling them that the city has been trying diligently to get this done.
Well, I'm hoping this is what we're doing here tonight to a certain extent, to whatever extent possible.
So, because we have not dropped the ball here, but.
Oh.
We can only do so much.
No, I, I frankly was coming here to ask why we don't invoke the bond, do the work ourselves.
Delighted that the Phase Four, someone else purchased it, okay? Just so we didn't have to go through this. Been a nightmare since I took this job, really. So, I mean, we've had back and forths, and poor Mike has been threatened, uh, and it's all just to get a, a development done. And meanwhile, these people are getting their front yards washed away. So when they said, can he put cement, uh, curb, I'm like, whatever he can put, just put something, okay? It's not ideal, but wait another year? So it's up to the planning board.
When exactly did he order this granite curb?
Well, I, who knows? I mean, he says he.
Or do we know that he has?
No, yeah.
As of this date, he has not ordered any granite curb in.
Yeah. But we can't make him. Can't put a gun to his head and make him order granite curb.
No, you invoke the bond and you order this granite curb yourself, and then we do the job.
What I can do.
Okay.
Then legally, you gotta, either.
It's just, he's clearly not made the effort necessary to finish the job if he hasn't ordered the granite curbing that he needs.
Yeah.
And at this point, if it's only gonna be in next May, and he still hasn't done it, even though he knows, he's aware, but he's managed to make plans to buy concrete curbing, which obviously is easier.
Right.
Without actually ordering the granite curb, uh, I, I have to question why we would not do whatever we have to do legally to invoke the bond and order the granite curb ourselves and plan to do the work ourselves and utilize the resources of the bond to do it.
Well, from my perspective, uh, Steve's right. We've had many conversations with this particular developer to the extent that we were going to invoke the bond on, on one aspect going back about a year and a half ago. But I guess Kevin Prof was working with him, and he, I guess he did some things, but, you know, if there's still problems, then we certainly can write a letter to the, to the bond company.
I guess my problem is, you know, once the design was done and the changes were made to that cul-de-sac, the secondary cul-de-sac and the primary cul-de-sac that was supposed to actually go around in a loop, blah, blah, blah. Once all of those decisions were made and he put a plan in front of you, he could, he could have ordered the granite curb then.
Oh, yeah, he could have, but guess what?
But he didn't.
He didn't.
And he still hasn't.
And you can't make, you know, and that's.
I, I understand completely. I, believe me.
That's why my email was short.
You've been here sixty-five years, I've been here sixty-seven years.
No, no.
And I don't do construction every day, but I've done enough construction to know how contractors work. And I know exactly what this guy is doing, and he's not getting the job done. And he's clearly hoping for some outcome that's to his benefit and not necessarily to the benefit of the people that bought houses there on the, on the promise given to them by our city planning board for requirements for this person to do the job.
Right.
And his company. So I'm only asking that it be given more serious consideration to, if, if neither of us are gonna get the granite until May, then I would trust us to do it before I would trust him to do it because he hadn't done it. So just for me, not the administration, I'm not the whole council, just for me.
Just be aware that that'll be a battle in itself.
Of course.
If we go ahead and do that, that's gonna be a battle because we have history with this particular person and his attorneys, by the way, numerous.
Yes, I've got the letters too.
Okay.
Read them all thoroughly. I even noted that one of them was addressed to the city council. I'm assuming it was somewhere in our communications around that time. I'll have to go back and look, um, but it, it revolved around these issues. And, um, again, I'm, I'm simply asking that something be done on behalf of the residents to get this project finished so they can have the smooth roadway that's supposed to go away, go along with the new house, because I, I don't want their house to be ten years old by the time they get a smooth roadway in front of their house.
Yeah, in regards to the plowing, I mean, I don't wanna be the person that a fire truck can't get in there.
Oh, I know.
Or whatever, so.
I understand that. It's just, as, as a legal matter, he is supposed to be responsible for maintaining the unfinished road.
Correct.
Including plowing snow.
Correct.
And he hasn't done it.
Correct.
Counsel.
What a great guy. I, I thank you for being patient with me with this emails, but I thought it was important that the people that live in that neighborhood, if they get a chance to watch this, get an understanding of how this involves someone other than the people that work for the city who are trying to work with them and should, I hope, continue to work with them and find a solution to this problem. Thank you.
Council President?
Councilman Canoia.
Just ask a question of the solicitor. You know, typically, my understanding is these type of bonds, if, they're fairly black and white. The bond is, you gotta do A, B, and C, and if you're not doing A, B, and C by certain, um, deadlines, you can pull down the bond. And frankly, the developer really doesn't have much say. That's why you have a third party, a bank or insurance company, whatever, that handles this stuff, and they just look at the, what's submitted against what the, the requirements of the bond are and, you know, and I'm just, I guess what I'm saying is if it, you can tell me if I'm wrong in a minute, if it's that straightforward, my view is I wouldn't give this guy any accommodation, pull down the bond and say, "We're gonna do it ourselves," and if it takes a little more time, you know, if this, if this guy hasn't made an order for his granite, I wouldn't spend another minute, um, wasting time with him, but.
Well, uh, to answer your first question, nothing in the law is straightforward.
Yep.
But secondly, we have, as Steve said, we have had a history with this developer.
Yep.
You know, before I saw the councilman's email, uh, Sunday, I, I, I assumed that he was long gone. I knew someone else bought the phase, but I hadn't heard recently about anything. Last time I heard, Kevin Prof was working with him and, and it was, it was, he was in, you know, in the rearview mirror. So if the, if the director thinks that he hasn't conformed to the requirements of the planning board, and he wants us to submit a claim to the bond, I mean, we can certainly do that, but it won't be a quick fix. He is entitled to, you know, his defense to that, and it, it won't be a quick fix. I think what Steve is getting at, and, and I, this is, the only part I know about is what I heard tonight, but I think what Steve is getting at, if you could get, you know, the cement curbing in, that'll be a quick fix, whereas if you go the bond route, um, you know, and he contests it, which I know he will, um, it's not gonna happen overnight. So that's just my experience with that.
The, the thing I have a problem with, though, is that when the people who purchased those houses for four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, they had the word of the city when they went and looked at a, an approved plan, and in that plan, it stated granite curbing. And I will tell you from somebody who is in a, well, it's not a new development now, but when I bought my house, which was in a new development at the time, one of the things that I looked at was that it had granite curbing. And so if those people, it may be a quick fix, but it is certainly subpar. Anywhere in the city that you drive around and look at concrete curbing and just go down Halsey or Marshall or Patton or any of those roads with the, the concrete, it's all disintegrated. And in some cases, there's nothing left, and it's, it's right up from the street, right to the yard. I don't think those people who bought houses that had a, an approved plan by this city saying that this is what the outcome was gonna be, I don't think it's right now to sell them a subpar product. And I think that in many cases, they look to the city to protect their good and welfare as well. So I think that giving him a break to be able to save some money at the expense of all of the residents that paid good money for their houses is the wrong thing to do. And I really hope that the planning board doesn't look for the short sighted gain and the quick fix because down the road, all of those people will be paying the price for inadequate property. And one thing, I, I may have gotten these Phase One, Two, and Three and confused, but there was a time when the city wanted to do the paving.
That was, that was Phase Four.
Okay. Very good.
Nothing to do with.
Okay.
Not with this developer.
Okay.
That was another one.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I just.
And, and, you know, I. Speaking to Mike. And, uh, as far as the granite curb versus the cement curb, I mean, I'm just trying to be accommodating to the residents, I mean, because they're so sick of the way they're living.
I know, but it's an accommodation for six months as opposed to the life of the, the property.
Well, you say that, but we'll see how, how quick it gets done. You know what I'm saying? So I'm, I'm, I have no problem, um, kinda steering the planning board to stick with the granite. It's, it's no problem, but it's just gonna, it's gonna be time consuming.
No, but I think it's good now that the law department knows that there's a, a bigger problem here, and maybe we can get, um, an, an approach from a few different angles, from planning, public works, and the law department, and maybe we can get something done.
Yeah, I mean, but in the, we could also, if push came to shove, um, we could all just, like, pave the road, um, with, like, a Cape Cod berm, and then just cut it back if we had to and put the granite curb in after. You know what I'm saying? Just as a, just as an emergency-type measure. I mean.
As long as there's the assurance that there's granite eventually, I think that's a good, a good idea.
I mean, if you saw the, the road and you saw the road, I mean, the manhole covers a six inches out of the ground still. It's been like that for years.
No, I, I know, and it's, it's.
And it's like you sent a, a truck in there with a plow and you, and you hold your breath, not wondering if it's coming back out. So, um, I mean, you know, there's, we'll kick around some.
Okay.
Various.
If I, just, just one more thing. In my fifteen years in Towne Lincoln, we actually had to invoke the bond once on one development where I think the developer had gone three full years after completion. When you gonna do it? When you gonna do it? When you gonna do it? Oh, I'm gonna get, yeah, forget it. Went to the, went to the, enforced the bond and finished the job. The town contracted with someone else to finish the job. They finished the job. We applied for the bond and got the money. That particular case, I don't think the developer fought with us because he would rather have just put it behind him and get it, just not have to deal with it. But, um, it is a rare occasion that these things happen, and you hope that they're cooperative when you decide to take responsibility, but they're not always.
Yeah, just a comment, Councilman, uh, it's true. It's very rarely do they invoke the bond because most contractors, you know, work with them. In your case, you had someone who cooperated.
Well, I don't know if I'd call it cooperation as much as...
He didn't fight it.
Thank you for taking the responsibility out of my hands.
In this case, we won't have that. I'm sure the director will agree with me.
So he really wants to pave this and put the curbing in, right? I'm not so sure he really wants to put the curbing in the paving, and if somebody will do it for him and take the money out of the bond, because it doesn't do well for his relationship with his insurance company, but that's his problem.
We just want to help the residents there.
And, you know, maybe I'll take a walk after. We're all doing some walking these days, so maybe I'll take a walk by, and I'll ask all the residents that live in those houses if they would prefer concrete or granite, and see what they have to say about it. Thank you very much. It was, really, I'm glad I had this discussion.
Me too.
Moving on to unfinished business of previous meetings.
22046, granted petition for a new joint poll for National Grid and Verizon on East Mill Street.
Motion passed.
Motion made by Councilman Gillette.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. Comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22046 is approved unanimously, six to zero.
22047, granted a petition for Cox Communications for underground installation of fiber optic cable for Federal Street in the right-of-way.
Motion accept.
Motion made by Councilman Susie, seconded by Councilman Gillette. Comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22047 is approved unanimously, six to zero.
22048, authorizing invoicing for emergency call-ins for the Department of Planning and Development, Division of Building Services.
Motion to approve. Motion made by Councilwoman Sierra. Seconded by Councilman Gillette and Councilman Canoia. Comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22048 is approved, six to zero.
22049, an ordinance set in fourth procedures associated with tax sales and assignment of tax titles.
Motion to approve. Motion made by Councilwoman Sierra, seconded by Councilman Canoia. Comments?
Mr. President, if I may, on the second page of this ordinance, Section 2161, entitled properties for which the city has acquired a tax title, I would ask the council, I spoke to Councilman Ward, if we could make a motion to delete that section, and then change Section 2162 to Section 2161. Because reading this particular Section 161, I talked to the Assistant Solicitor Waslick today and tonight, and we both agree that it raises some questions, and we should do it, we should look into it a little bit more, but if we just take that section out, the rest of the ordinance is fine.
What is the question that it raises? Because the concern is, before he answers, we have properties that the city has, we want out the tax sale, nobody bids on it, the city bids on it, now the city has a tax lien on a piece of property. And there are instances, it appears, that those properties don't show up on the next tax sale.
Right, because the city holds them, and they don't put them out. So the question would be, how much would we put it out for? Would we charge interest and things of that nature? This is really not my expertise, but, you know...
Did you speak to the individual that does the tax sales?
I did. I tried to get ahold of Glenn, only today, so.
Because he did look...
But Waslick is pretty knowledgeable of tax sales, too.
Okay.
In fact, he wrote some legislation on tax sales, I might add, but he thinks that it just raises more questions, and he wanted more time to maybe change it a little bit.
Yep, we can come back and add it.
So we could always pass it, and then we could come back and, you know, put another section in.
Counselor President?
Councilman Ward.
Are we acting on the ordinance, or are we acting on an amendment at this point?
We haven't done anything with an amendment yet.
Okay. Just as a point, Section 160, the very first sentence, and it says, "All properties in arrears for more than three quarterly payments shall be subject to tax sale." A property that the city has taken tax title to continues to be in arrears. The owner of the property still owes the taxes and the interest, and the interest continues to accrue for that time, and subsequent tax bills get added to the liability.
I believe so, yes.
So, in fact, all properties, even those with a tax title under the control, under the name of the city of Unsockit, should be placed on a list for tax sale based upon that sentence alone.
You would think so, but I know that some cities don't put all of them on, and...
No, I've learned that I can't judge what we do here by what other cities and towns do. I'm just saying, if that sentence is in there, then if the city has a tax title to it, but it's still accruing more taxes and interest, it's in arrears, because the city doesn't own the property yet. The person that owns the property still owns the property.
Yes, the person still owns the property until the rights of redemption.
It's in arrears, and others, and I've learned from having fire districts, that just because you have a tax title doesn't mean that somebody else can't file for a fire district, or do a buy at a tax sale in a fire district, and then foreclose. And guess what? The town was left holding the bag for the town taxes, because the foreclosure was good, and they owned it free and clear, because that's what the court said. And we learned a lesson in finding that out. But the point is, it's still owned by the owner, it's still taxes due and payable, and therefore should be listed on a tax sale. And I know it costs money for advertising, it costs money for title search, it costs a whole bunch of money that you're not really going to collect from anybody, but it becomes an additional part of the lien on the property for those costs, correct?
I believe so, yes. Again, I don't do the tax sales. It's one area of the law I never really was interested in, so I would consult with Glenn Andreoli in terms of what he thought about what you just said, but I believe you are correct.
Okay. Well, for my part, I'm satisfied with that, and so I will make a motion to include what the solicitor suggested, to remove Section 2161, renumber Section 2162 to Section 2-161. And I would also suggest or ask that we add to it, so as to provide clarity, an additional sentence at the end of that section.
Which section, John?
The new Section 2-161. Where it speaks of the time involved and the requirement for a council resolution, and the sentence I am proposing would say, "Any assignment or sale must be for no less than 100% of unpaid taxes and interest through the date of the transfer."
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Canoia. Comments on the amendment? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22049 is amended, seven to zero, and the main motion is amended. Comments?
Counselor President?
Councilman Ward.
Just want to make a statement about it, and what brought this to my mind, and what makes this something I think is important, because I think the solicitor alluded to the fact that oftentimes, there would be properties that the city gains tax title to that don't go up for tax sale again, and if nobody's bought them, there may be situations where, and frankly, I don't know how a quality property would get by, some of the people I know that go to tax sales regularly, they don't usually miss an opportunity. But my understanding is, after that, if it's not put up for tax sale regularly, an interested party can come into the City Hall and express an interest, and it becomes discretionary to the administration as to who to sell it to, and I'm sure it's against the collection of the full amount of taxes and interest, but it loses the quality of, I guess, what we would call transparency in government, where somebody can privately buy or redeem, and then go immediately to foreclosure, because if a year's gone by, that year's obligation is fulfilled, and so somebody can walk in, swoop up a property at a discount fairly quickly, and it becomes discretionary to an administration without necessarily being communicated either to the public as an offering that's available to them through some kind of advertising, or through the council through some sort of approval process. And that's why I thought this was something we should do in order to make it a more visible process, and let people know out there that there are properties that the city may have a tax title to that are available to them if they are interested in acquiring them even outside of the tax sale process. So that's why I thought this was something that would be beneficial to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Counselor President?
Director Chamberlain?
I just have a concern. Section 2160, you mentioned we can enter into payment plans. What if somebody, we enter into a payment plan, they don't keep up with the payment plan? It doesn't address what would happen the next tax sale. Do we allow them to still, they can't enter into a payment plan the next tax sale?
I can tell you what I do. If you don't fulfill the payment plan, all bets are off. As a matter of fact, my payment plans specifically state, "Your failure to comply with this payment plan will immediately make you not eligible for another payment plan, and it will make the property subject to the next tax sale unless you pay up in full."
Okay, should we add that?
I use it as an administrative thing discretion, at my discretion, to, and I think the treasurer by law has the right to design the payment plan. For my part, I limit a payment plan to whatever is owed, and I design the payments such that by the end of the next fiscal year, when the new bill is coming out, the payment plan requires that the bill be fully paid. If they fail to keep up, end of deal, catch up, or you're on tax sale, there is no more payment plan considered.
Okay.
But that's the way I conduct business in Lincoln.
I agree. I agree with that.
Do we do any tax plans now? I mean, do we have properties that get put together, that show up on the initial preliminary list for tax sale, and then there's a 90-day period and all that? Do we do any payment plans now? John, you're nodding yes.
Yeah, I think, we haven't done any recently, but I recall that we have done some.
Okay.
We have...
Does that sound right, Chris?
We have some water and sewer agreements.
Yeah, water and sewer.
We didn't do any payment plans for this past tax sale.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22049 is approved, seven to zero, as amended, first passage.
22051, ordinance and amendment of Chapter 17 entitled Traffic of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Unsockit.
Motion approve.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
No.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Reluctantly, yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22051 is approved, six to one. Second passage.
22052, an ordinance ordering the payment of a $3,000 health care buyback to former employee Lori Perry.
Motion approve.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments?
Counselor President? Oh, go ahead. Sorry, no. Go first. So, I am listed in one of the sponsors for this ordinance, and I just, I'm glad that the solicitor's here. I actually ended up voting no the last time, even though I was a sponsor, but I want to explain why, when Cindy Johnson brought the paperwork, and I saw that there was a paper that was actually signed, and I believe it never went out denying the benefits from the solicitor, we just, we wanted more clarity on that, because I know a solicitor would never sign something without actually reading it and, you know, agreeing with it. So when I saw that signature, that to me carried a lot of weight, and that was the reason why.
Right, so you want my explanation for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, I sign a lot of letters. This particular issue, you know, Cindy gave me the information, you know, the background and the factual information regarding the medical buyback. I didn't look into it. It was on my desk. I signed it, because I was supposed to send it out, and then I said to my secretary, "Let me see that back. I want to see that letter back." And then I read it, and I said, "You know what? This is not a legal opinion. I don't know anything about what they're talking about." So it never was issued. So in my opinion, that signed letter is similar to scrap paper. It should have never been presented to the city council, because I recanted it. I never sent it out. And in fact, I suggested that if that's what they wanted to do, they should have Mr. Ferguson, who was the personnel director, do that, not the solicitor. So that was not my legal opinion. And if you read it, all it says, it reiterates what, you know, Cindy Johnson said. But that never went out. It was never issued, so I don't know why Cindy would give that to you, because I had instructed my secretary, Alex, to destroy that letter. So I equate that with something that you scribble on a piece of paper and then decide, "I don't want to do it." So in my book, unless I send something out on my stationary, it's not me. So I don't know why she would present that to the city council. I'm kind of upset about that, because she knows right well that I said, "I'm not going to sign that letter, and it's not going out." And it was definitely not a legal opinion in any way. If you have it in front of you, you'll see, all it does is say, "Well, this is what the deputy director of finance said." It doesn't say, "In my legal opinion, this is what you get and what you don't get," because I never looked into it. So I hope I clarified that for you and answered it as honestly as I could.
Counselor President? Ms. Johnson?
Can I see that? Do you have a copy of that letter? I'd like to see it.
So for point of clarification, I did request a legal opinion from the city solicitor. We discussed this employee and this case, and the letter that he signed was the result of that. Now, when I receive a signed letter from the city solicitor, knowing that he has reviewed the case, I take that as a legal opinion. Even though, yes, his secretary said, "Put it on personnel director letterhead," he still approved the content of that letter.
It was never approved.
Valid... I'm sorry, I have the floor.
It was never approved. Don't make inaccuracies. I've had it with this nonsense of this administration.
I have the floor.
Bottom line is, the letter was never approved by the solicitor. It didn't go out on Law Department's stationery.
Solicitor, hold on one second. Go ahead.
I have the floor, Cindy Solicitor. You know, we have had several conversations about this benefit and this employee. You were asked for a legal opinion. You were asked to review all the documentation, which you did. You're the one who told me, "Construct the letter for me, and I'll sign it." I did that, you signed it, and then now are you telling me that you changed your mind?
Absolutely.
You changed your opinion?
Absolutely.
All right, so any opinion that you've ever made before is subject to be changed, is what you're telling me.
Well, first of all, in the law, people change their opinions, but this is not a legal letter. This letter specifically says, "As a result, Cindy Johnston, the deputy director of finance, reviewed your personnel file and made the following determinations with respect to vacation time, medical buyback, and city property." It doesn't say that the city solicitor gave...
And if you were not in agreement with it, you shouldn't have signed it. And you shouldn't have told the personnel director, "I'm okay with this letter. Just put it on your stationery, because it shouldn't come from the Law Department."
Cindy, you know what? You're not a lawyer. This is not a legal opinion. I don't consider it a legal opinion. All it is, is something that I signed and instructed my office not to put out. So if you could ask Lori Perry if she ever received this from me, she didn't. When you were told that the solicitor was not going to sign it...
I never said that she got that.
That's right, she never got it, because I never issued it.
Because you told the personnel director, "I'm okay with the content of this letter, but I want it on personnel letterhead." So you're telling me you changed your mind.
I never reviewed her file. To this date, I haven't reviewed her file. I signed a letter and instructed my secretary not to send it out, because I don't agree with the letter. If you wanted to send it out, and you wanted to sign the letter, or you wanted Mark to sign the letter, that's up to you to do that. But the solicitor's office did not send this letter to Lori Perry, because it didn't go out.
I'm not saying that it did.
Now, you chose, because you'll do anything to get patted on the back by whoever. You chose to present this to the city council without asking me first, and that was totally inappropriate. inappropriate.
I am not looking for a pat on the back. I am doing my job.
Totally inappropriate.
This employee, and you know damn well, we have had several discussions, so don't tell me you didn't know about it and we didn't review it.
No, no, I knew about it.
We've had several discussions about why this employee is not entitled to this benefit, and it is my job as controller to do whether it's appropriate or not.
Councilman.
And this woman did not qualify for this benefit.
And that was made clear from the very beginning. My, my understanding, though, is that seeing the signature, and I hear your explanation, but, and I understand that there's a lot of forms that go through your office, but there's such a weight in your signature. So, so the fact that you signed it, for me, you weren't here to even defend yourself or, you know, we didn't have, and I know that some people said, well, we'll just pass it and then we'll ask, you know, what happened. But for me, I have to make the determination with what's in front of me at that time, and your signature carries a lot of weight. So you can't, if you, and I understand, so that makes me question, how many of the forms really quickly came in and maybe you signed it and whatever? We, that, that to me, it's not, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's a reason, is a reason, but it doesn't seem like a really good excuse that you just, oh, signed it and I brought it back. Thank God you caught it, you know, and you said, bring it back. I understand that. And it was always made clear that she never received it. And for me, it wasn't about whether Lori received it or not. It was the fact that it could, a paper could actually get the signature of our solicitor.
I assumed it was destroyed, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Council President?
Are you all set, Councilwoman?
No. Yeah, yeah, I'm fine.
Councilman Canoia?
Yeah, and so just again, this was presented from Ms. Johnson, this package at the last meeting, and we went back and forth, but we did conclude that this letter never was sent, right?
Yep.
So it was never sent, we all knew that. So I'm not sure why it was given to us. As the solicitor said, nowhere in this letter does it say, it's the solicitor's legal opinion. It's as very clearly as he said, I'm going to restate it. Dear Ms. Perry, on May 16th, you notify the city that you were submitting your resignation effective May 9th, thus not returning to the office. As a result, Cindy Johnson, not the solicitor, Cindy Johnson, the deputy finance director and controller, reviewed your personnel file and made the following determinations with respect to your vacation time, medical buyback, city property. Very clear. Cindy Johnson reviewed the file. Cindy Johnson made these determinations. He had a signature on it, and this was June 2nd. He then obviously said, well, wait a minute, this is, this should really come from personnel. And that's what happened. It got withdrawn, and then they changed the letter, and they said, the finance department reviewed it, not Cindy Johnson. But the issue I have is Ms. Johnson comes to us, and he's not here at the time, and she purports that this is a quote, "legal opinion." It's not a legal opinion. Nowhere in here does it say anything about what his opinion is. It's just simply a letter signed by him at their request, saying that Cindy Johnson made these determinations, not the solicitor. He took no position on this. So to suggest that this was a legal opinion is misleading as hell, number one. Number two, Ms. Johnson said, he actually supported and did a legal opinion that she was not eligible for the medical buyback. Then she said the Department of Labor and Training dismissed her case without a hearing. I'm very surprised the council has chosen to go against the solicitor's legal opinion and the opinion of Rhode Island Department of Labor and Training. I'm going to say it again, the Department of Labor and Training, according to Ms. Johnson, dismissed the case without a hearing. I would just like to add. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I have the floor. I have an email from the Department of Labor and Training. This was on September 12th that Ms. Johnson said it was dismissed. I have an email from Ms. Virginia Porter from the Department of Labor and Training. I received a call this morning from Ms. Perry. There seems to be an issue with the council. She was told that a decision from the DLT was made and she was not owed the health insurance buyback. I want to remind you that Lori Perry's complaint remains open and active. From the DLT. I want to remind you that Lori Perry's complaint remains open and active, not dismissed without a hearing, as we were told, okay? Further, the solicitor inquired about, to give the DLT the documents they were requesting, where is the support for not paying Ms. Perry her medical buyback? And I asked Mr. Ferguson the same question, and he sent it over to the solicitor. And the solicitor responded, Councilman, I inquired and was told there's no policy. Okay? And there's an email from Ms. Johnson to the solicitor back on July 21st. The full-time requirement is in the personnel ordinance. Employment as of June 30th is per the pro-tech contract that Ms. Perry follows. So the solicitor got back to them and said, the solicitor reviewed the personnel ordinance and the pro-contract. Nowhere does it state that an employee has to be employed as of June 30th. So I'll ask Ms. Johnson, here's the pro-tech contract. Can you show us where June 30th is a requirement in order to get the healthcare buyback, as you stated right here? Employment as of June 30th is per the pro-tech contract that Ms. Perry follows. So here's the pro-tech contract. You want to point it out where it is?
Councilman Canoia, the contract is based on a fiscal year. The medical buyback benefit is based on the fiscal year, which is June 30th. It is city policy that you have to be an employee as of June 30th to be eligible.
That's fine, except when you were asked for a copy of the policy, there was no policy provided. And then you specifically said, it's per the contract. So show me in here where it says anything about June 30th employment, because it doesn't exist. If you want to show me, I'd be more than happy to be corrected. Here it is, seriously.
I'm very well aware of that contract. I'm on negotiations.
I understand that. But you said it's per the contract.
Contract period goes from July 1 to June 30.
I know what the contract goes to, but where does it say in here that a medical buyback requires employment on June 30th?
That is what the city uses as a city policy.
Okay, so stop right there. It's a policy.
The contract end date is June 30th.
You said, you said a policy. You said it's a policy.
I've always said it was a policy.
No, 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 no. We're not playing these games anymore. Employment as of June 30th is per the pro-tech contract.
I'm not playing any games, Councilman Canoia.
Is per the pro-tech contract. Here's the contract. Show me the section where it has that. I don't want to hear about a city policy that doesn't exist in writing. You said it's per the contract. Where in the contract does it say employment is required as of June 30th?
And I've already told you.
What'd you tell me?
We take the contract date as June 30th.
I understand what the contract date is. It says it right here.
Does it say in writing, medical benefits, June 30th? No, it says, medical benefits, FY. The city's fiscal year ends on June 30th.
So, but, so what the, the?
And I'd also like to point out that.
Where does it say that it's required, employment is required as of June 30th? It also says that if you take, if you take the healthcare, okay, you're going to deduct 20% and you're going to do it ratably. It doesn't say June 30th or anything else. So there's nothing in here. There's not a single word in here that says that June 30th, employment on June 30th is a requirement in order to get the medical buyback. Someone takes a medical buyback starting on July 1st, okay, and they work for 10 months, and then they leave and go say, oh, you're not getting, you're not going to get the $3,000. The fact that we happened to pay it as a timing issue on July 1st the following year is interesting, but to suggest they didn't earn that benefit when they could have taken the healthcare and had, on July 1st, and had a serious medical condition that would have cost the city tens of thousands of dollars the very next day? I mean, this is absurd. But the bottom line is, you cannot show anybody where it says, as you alleged, that June 30th is a requirement. You keep referring to a quote, "policy," but when you were asked for a policy so they could provide it to the DLT, there was no policy. So there's no written policy on this, number one, and number two, there's nothing in the contract, which she's not a member of, by the way, but even if she was, there's nothing in this contract that says the medical buyback is only paid if you're employed on June 30th. That's, that's something you people have made up along the way. And then I know that Councilman Ward, when I asked Mr. Ferguson for the support, he asked, I want a list of anybody else that you've ever paid prorated. I know he hasn't gotten an answer. Okay? So number one, there was no legal opinion. There was a letter that was signed preliminarily by the, by the solicitor that said Cindy Johnson, not the, not the solicitor, but Cindy Johnson made the determination, number one. Number two, the DLT did not dismiss the case without a hearing. In fact, it's still open. Number three, there's nothing in here. So it's just, it's constant, it's just constant spin. So I move the question.
Council President? May I respond?
Yes.
First of all, as far as legal opinion, I had asked the city solicitor for legal opinion. I thought the letter that he signed was representation of his legal opinion. Obviously, I thought wrong. Again, I don't know why he would sign something that he didn't agree with. I think it was a fair assumption that that was his legal opinion because I had asked for one, and this is what I got in return. Secondly, as far as Rhode Island DLT dismissing the case, I did not find out until after our last meeting that that information was incorrect. I was told that from the mayor, who said that De Simone told her that, that it was dismissed without even being heard. It wasn't until, excuse me, Councilman Canoia, I'm telling the truth.
I didn't say anything. What are you, I don't even.
I did not find out and saw a copy of the letter from DLT until after the meeting that it didn't actually get, get not heard.
I understand that.
I based my comment on what I was, what I was told.
Told by the mayor, right?
Next.
And that's your first mistake, but keep going. Was it true or was it false? Don't look at me like I'm crazy. It was false.
I don't know. That is between the solicitor and the mayor.
No, 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 no.
It was a verbal conversation. I'm telling you what I was told.
I didn't interest in it in firsthand, secondhand, and thirdhand conversations. You made a statement at a meeting, and I'm just telling you, it was false. Now you're telling us you got it from the mayor, and I'm telling you, great, it was false. Stop trying to go back to the solicitor.
Let's see.
It is what it is.
I just, I just wanted to reiterate to the councilwoman, the original of that letter that I signed, I have in my office. It was never sent out. So maybe there were copies floating, but the original letter that, of that, I have in my office.
But I thought you asked for it to be destroyed.
I thought it was destroyed, but my secretary kept it in her file. So, and it was not a legal opinion. When you see my legal opinion, I say exactly, this is my legal opinion based on whatever. That was not my legal opinion.
Yeah, I, I never thought it was a legal, but it was, it's, I think there's a difference between a legal opinion and an endorsement. Your signature endorses things, and there's a weight in what you endorse. So just, I would just say in the future, just a little more careful what you put your name on.
Council President? Councilman Ward?
All, I just want to add to this is something Councilman Canoia just alluded to, which has to do with an email that he had sent back on August 26th, asking for a copy of the policy, and as was pointed out to us, the solicitor said there was no such policy. However, on that same day, I followed up with an inquiry myself to Mr. Ferguson, asking to be, or, yeah, asking to be provided a copy of any other letter of such notification to a former employee post-separation, or any, a listing of any, any medical buyback payments to employees during the year of separation, or in fact, evidence that no medical buyback payments were made to employees in a prorated way during the year of separation in order to support the assertion being made that she was, Lori Perry was not eligible. That was August 26th. This is now, oh, and Director Ferguson stated that the case was handled by the solicitor's office, and by copy of this email, I'm forwarding a request to the solicitor. I have seen no evidence of any prior examples showing that it supports the assertion being made concerning Lori Perry. If it was there, it would make this matter a much easier issue to resolve. But since August 26th, this being October the 3rd, having received nothing as evidence, I'm inclined to think that there is no such evidence. So I will be supporting this because there's been nothing shown that is conclusive to say that a person leaving prior to the year-end who chose the option of, of the alternative to, to coverage through the payment would not receive a prorated payment or the payment for that for not having been covered by the insurance. So I have no evidence to provide me the support turning this down. Thank you.
Council President?
Councilman Ward, I think that one of two things, either your requested information does not exist, or you're simply being ignored. Huh?
I think I should have gotten the response that said, we've never had a situation like this ever.
Right, that was part two, that you're just simply being ignored. Both answers are not beneficial.
Council President?
So, yes, Ms. Johnson?
When an issue goes to the law department and becomes a legal issue, our policy is among the departments that any further communication go through the solicitor's office. I was never contacted by the solicitor's office concerning Councilman Ward's request.
No, but Mr. Ferguson was, and I would have thought that when he referred it to the solicitor, he would know that his job would be to research the question and compile the answer without necessarily having to go through the formality of the solicitor asking you, and then you asking Mr. Ferguson to do what I had already asked. I mean, we could turn this into a circular thing, but the fact is, he knew the question. He knew what was being looked for was being sought and, and did not provide it, regardless of whether it went back through you or not.
And we've had discussions with the solicitor that our policy, our procedure, what's been in place for at least 50-plus years, is that during the year of resignation, if the employee leaves prior to June 30th, they do not get medical buyback. That has been put in years, in place for decades. Secondly, I did tell the solicitor that this is what we do. I have the list who gets medical buyback every year. It clearly shows those employees who resigned prior to June 30th did not get a buyback. And I would have been more than prepared to provide them to solicitor if he had requested them. But he was told that that's how we do it, and that's been the procedure for 50-plus years. And, and I just don't even understand where we have taxpayers who feel that they're being overburdened with taxes, that we would give an employee money that she's not even entitled to. It's not for the taxpayers.
You mean, that would be like money that was paid to people?
She's being treated like everyone else has been treated.
That would be like salaries paid to people without approval of the city council?
First of all, that's up for debate, and that will be discussed tomorrow night.
You brought up the taxpayer issue. I'm just trying to follow through, so.
That is one of the items for tomorrow night, and we can discuss it then.
No, you brought it up tonight. I thought we can discuss it now.
No, I'll prefer to wait till tomorrow.
Okay, good. Council President?
So, if I can, Councilman Canoia, before you finish up, I will simply say, it really sickens me that we're spending this much time for an employee that was with the city in good standing for 10 months of a fiscal year, who, had she just simply taken healthcare on day one, she could have exhausted far more than $3,000, since we're a pay-as-you-go community for healthcare. She could have easily expended much more than $3,000 with one illness. And this is the message that gets out there about employment in the City of One Socket. Be careful because what you get in a verbal commitment, if you leave on bad terms, everything's out. And somebody who clearly believed that they were getting a $3,000 healthcare buyback and took no healthcare for 10 months clearly deserves that money. And it's just, it's ridiculous to me that we're going to use people with no disregard for their well-being and for who they are and for what they've given to the city through their employment. The day they're gone, they're dead to you. And that disgusts me, that we treat people this poorly, that we have a discussion about $3,000 for somebody who gave us their time of employment, and we're going to sit here and debate whether they deserve the money, which we know they deserve. It sickens me. Councilman Canoia?
Looking at an email to Ms. Johnson. We checked with the personnel director, and he reported that there are no written policies regarding the buyback plan as it pertains to full-time versus part-time employees and the requirement of employment on June 30th. Please advise. And it says again, good afternoon, Cindy. The solicitor reviewed the personnel ordinance and the pro-tech contract. Nowhere does it state that an employee has to be employed as of June 30th to receive the medical buyback plan. Kindly. Kindly advise the Solicitor where this information can be found." Thank you. And these, these were, this was after the preliminary letter that you signed on June 2nd, after hearing from Ms. Johnson that she determined, yada, yada, yada. So I'm just going to ask you real simple. Have you reviewed the PROTEC contract? Have you found any policies that suggest any of the stuff that's being alleged, that i.e., you have to be employed on June 30th, as of June 30th, in order to get the quote "buyback" that would have been quote-earned throughout the year?
What's the date of that email?
July 27th and July 21st.
Yeah, as of those dates?
Yeah.
I have not, I did not receive anything. Those are accurate emails.
And, so you, and you reviewed the PROTEC contract, as it said, and you don't see anything in there for June 30th requirement?
No, it's, you have the contract in front of you.
I know, I know. And I will echo the Council President's remarks. We have had an exodus out of City Hall, and I appreciate that we have people showing up, handing out flowers to the mayor, et cetera, okay? But we've had an exodus. We lost two more in Mike's department because of pay supposedly. So when somebody signs up for the health care buyback, instead of taking health care, which could cost the city lots more, the whole point of the health care buyback frankly is to incentivize our employees not to take the health care, because it can have a significant cost to the city and its taxpayers. And when somebody does that, and we treat them this shabbily, that's one of the reasons why we have the exodus. That's one of the reasons why we have open positions all over the place here at City Hall. It's one of the reasons why people accept offers, and then as soon as they find something else, they go, they go a different direction. So if you want to help the taxpayers, I would suggest to you, what's more helpful to the taxpayers is to figure out a way to attract and retain employees. And I would further suggest that treating them in this fashion, screwing around with their, their medical buybacks, their vacation, and their personal time, which seems to be a hobby of some people in this, in this building, if you want to help the taxpayers, knock that stuff off. I move the question.
Motion to move the question.
Oh, go ahead, I have to draw that.
I just have a question for the Solicitor.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. Cindy Johnston mentioned that they have a list of people who were denied the buyback. Would approving this open people who were denied to, because we're talking here about dates, and that's the reason that other people have been told that they could not get the buyback? Would that open other people to come in and try to get their buybacks after?
So, I just want to put this close to me. So as I read this ordinance, it pertains only to Lori Perry. The ordinance pertains only to Lori Perry.
I, I realize that, but we're, we're saying that there's nothing written, that it says that it had to be prior to that date, but there's other people that we have denied for that reason. So legally, would that give other people recourse to come after their payback?
Well, obviously, this would, this would only pertain to her, but if other people were similarly situated to her, they could bring it up to the City Council as well, and they'd have a pretty good argument. You know? But if, if they wanted to, they could create a policy. But as of the dates of those emails, I never saw any policy.
Council President for last time.
Are you, Councilwoman?
I was just going to say, could, I would be interested in seeing that list before I voted, because I think it could have a bigger impact later. But, but I would be interested in seeing that list. I, I wish we would have had that information before we had to make this determination.
I don't have that information, so.
Council President for the first time.
You all set, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Sierra.
So my question is for the city Solicitor. In order to remedy that situation, the city technically could institute a, a policy tomorrow stating that it's, it's pretty much said and done with, with Ms. Perry.
The city, the city could implement the policy. They may have already done so, but they could have, they could have, they could do it, they could do it now, they could have did it last week.
They could do it tomorrow.
They could do it tomorrow. But as of the dates of those emails, as of the dates, pertinent times in terms of Ms. Perry, there were, I didn't, I never saw one.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to ease Councilwoman Gonzalez's mind that if you're concerned about 10 people coming forward from the list, it's very easy to squash that, if it's not already, if, if it's not already in play, which it may be.
Question about that, if I may?
I am thinking.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So if we instituted something tomorrow, would that be retroactive, or those that just move forward? Because you, I don't think you can make something now and say, with the exemption of, you know, past workers. Usually, if you institute something now, it's from moving, but I could be wrong. That's why I'm asking.
Well, I mean, if someone, if someone was only working for 10 months, then yeah, you're right. You, you probably couldn't go retroactive, because it would be on fear to that employee. But going forward, it would affect everyone at that particular time.
Yeah, but I'm more concerned about the people in the past, not really moving forward, because you're right. I think actually this has brought up, you know, the fact that we need to look at, we need to look at the whole situation, make sure that things are written, and that they're clear, and that we're never again in a place like this. You know, obviously, things need to be clarified, but I'm thinking of past, not as much forward. Moving forward, I think we can change that, but that, what we, if we pass something tomorrow, that wouldn't apply to somebody who a year or two ago might have been denied.
Well, I think June 30th already occurred, so if they, if they paid the medical buybacks as of June 30th, it would, it would only be someone that was hired between then and now. So I don't think it would be that much of an exposure.
To someone a year ago that would have been denied.
Once the year, once the year, once the policy is instituted, the policy is instituted.
So they wouldn't be able to say, well.
Well, I mean, people can say anything.
I was told the wrong, yeah.
You'd have to litigate it, but, you know. I think the important thing is, in my experience in labor law, a lot of it is, is what's written in the contract, but it all emanates from a question of fairness. What's fear? And I think that should always be the guiding principle in labor relations.
Yeah.
Just, that's my opinion.
I agree, and I think that's why I'm asking the question. Because I think the people on that list would claim unfairness versus.
You know what? Councilwoman?
But, but I just.
Maybe they're right, and maybe it deserves to be looked at, and maybe that's the problem why there's this exodus from this building. And maybe we need to look at that and swallow the difficult pill and look at it from a stance of fairness. And if, if Ms. Perry was treated unfairly, and she's deserving of the $3,000, and there is another exact situation, maybe that needs to be looked at too. So it may be, yes, fix a polity, a policy to go forward, but maybe we can correct why people are leaving the building so easily because of the way they're being treated, and we can hopefully stymie that. Any other comments?
Council President.
Ms. Johnston.
I appreciate your passion for employees that exited. But like I said before, this policy, I'm sure it was written at one point, but it's been in place for decades. This is the way it was done. I'm not at liberty for one person to say, okay, I'm going to change it for you. My job is to enforce what's put in place. This is what has been done for 50 years. I can't just change my mind for Lori Perry. I agree. Is it something, now that it's been brought up, that we should sit down and discuss? Absolutely. But at the time Lori Perry left, this is what was in place. I'm just doing my job, and if I wasn't, you'd be the first one to call me out on it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
No.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22052 is approved, 6 to 1, second passage.
22053, amend in Articles 16, Streets and Sidewalks to increase the rental rates for dump trucks and pickup trucks during snow emergencies.
Motion to pass.
Motion made by Councilman Gillette, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Ward.
One question. So, Director, with your microphone. It's a simple question. Under the circumstances of the economy, is this enough?
Well, it's a, it's a step in the right direction, and.
I'm not trying to encourage that we spend more money, but I, I don't want you lacking in assistance where it's necessary when the storms come.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm comfortable with the numbers, quite frankly, and.
Okay.
I think it's a, you know, if it needs to be adjusted at some point, then we'll just have to amend it, but.
I just want to make sure you're comfortable with it.
Yep, and I appreciate that. Just trying to be competitive with the other cities, towns, states, whatever.
Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22053 is approved, 7 to 0, second passage.
22054, amend in Personnel Code to reclassify the position of legal assistant Law Department.
Motion to approve. Motion made by Councilwoman Sierra, seconded by Councilman Canoia. Comments?
Council President.
Ms. Johnston.
I will reiterate what I said at the last meeting, that the whereas, I know that Councilman Canoia said that, that's meaningless, because it's in the whereas. The whereas section of Personnel Code does, Code does not apply to this employee, because she is non-classified. That section of Personnel Code is if you are a classified employee, you may ask for reclassification. My second concern, and again, it's my job to look at these things, is there was an ordinance passed last year, 21057, let's see, passed unanimously, that allowed the solicitor, city solicitor to be able to be in control of all hiring, the appointing authority for any employee in his or her department. If you make this particular position classified, any future solicitors will lose that privilege in that ordinance, 21057, and I, I feel that you should be made aware of that.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilman Canoia.
Is the, is the other employee in that department classified or non-classified?
Non-classified.
So they're both non-classified?
Yes.
Okay. The, I think the 21057 to which you refer, and that's a fair, that's a fair point, Ms. Johnston, is really about who hires that person, whether they're classified or not classified, but, and you write about the Personnel Code in the whereas, but again, I think this was just, you know, an example, so to speak, but at the end of the day, at the end of the day, Section 2 is clear that this ordinance shall take effect, yada, 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 in all ordinances or parts of ordinance inconsistent herewith or hereby repealed in connection with this one. So even though this is contrary to the Personnel Ordinance that says the Personnel Board has to approve, you know, a transfer from classified to non-classified, this ordinance would supersede that, based on the Section 2.
Okay, so for a point of clarification, the Personnel Ordinance says that any classified position needs to be approved by the Personnel Board.
Yep.
So would that still happen?
Not if this passes, because this would supersede it.
That is correct. This, this ordinance supersedes any ordinance that's in conflict, confliction with it, and that's true of every ordinance that you pass. This language at the end is in all the ordinances that you pass, so if there's anything in, in the Code of Ordinances that interferes with a present ordinance, the present ordinance supersedes it. And that's because, you know, the Personnel Code is just a bunch of ordinances. So one past council can't control what a present council does, and that's the rationale for it.
I'd just like to make one clarification regarding 21057. It strictly speaks to appointing authority, and it goes on to say, "The city clerk shall be the appointing authority for all permanent and temporary personnel and staff that are budgeted and appropriated for the city, by the City Council, and otherwise, the city clerk, provided further with respect to the Law Department, the city solicitor shall be the appointing authority." So I think it's exactly that. He has the appointing authority, so being classified or non-classified is, is irrelevant.
Yeah, and if I may, Council President, I don't read it at all the way Ms. Johnston read it. I read it the way you, you have just read it.
Okay.
It doesn't, has no effect on that particular ordinance.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call vote.
Councilman Canoia?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 21054 is approved, 7 to 0, second passage. Moving on to new business.
22055, granting a petition for a new joint poll for National Grid in Verizon on River Street.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Gillette. Comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22055 is approved, first passage, 7 to 0.
22056, authorization to sell property located at 357 Park Place, Windsocket Island, Lot 27, Lot 113.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Ward.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra and Councilman Canoia. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Canoia.
Again, this is for the sale of the old middle school, and Solicitor, we, we met with the buyers several months ago. They were doing their due diligence. I think they've completed their due diligence. They're ready to close. However, they have some religious holidays that are going to hold them up. I am a little concerned with some of the specificity that you have in Sections, let's see, Section 3, and, well, Section 3, it says, "The buyer shall develop the property into luxury mixed-use complex, including high-end residential apartments and community fitness center with a gym and an indoor pool." I know that's their intention, but as we discussed earlier tonight with a developer up in Oak Grove, the world can change sometimes, and, you know, there's people predicting a recession, you know, hopefully that doesn't come, come to pass, but I don't, I'm not sure it makes sense to completely hogtie them into these type of things. So I, I would, I would feel bad if we said, "The developer shall develop the property to luxury mixed-use, into a luxury mixed-use complex, including high-end residential apartments, and may include community fitness center, gym, and indoor pool." I don't think that hurts us. I think they're going to do everything they can to make it as good as possible and profitable for them, but, you know, if, 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 if the economy gets really bad, and they're going to make some adjustments, I'm not going to, I don't want to stop the whole thing, because they don't do a pool, so. So I'd like to make a motion.
Are you doing that as an amendment?
Yeah, I'm going to make an amendment to Section 3, and just add the, including high-end residential apartments, and insert the word, "And may include a community fitness center with a gym and a pool."
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Comments on the amendment? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22056 is amended, 7 to 0. On the main motion as amended, comments?
Council President?
Councilman Ward.
I hope it's the last time we see this.
Hearing, hearing nothing else, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoyah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ciara?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, in 22056 is approved, first passage, seven to zero as amended.
22057 ordinance of the City of Wensaco proving the financing of replacement of lead service lines in the water system for the city and all attendant expenses, and approving the issuance of water system revenue bonds and notes, therefore, in an amount not to exceed $525,000.
Council President?
Uh, we need a motion first.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Councilman Susie, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Comments? Director Chamberlain.
I just want to bring this to your, your attention, that you already had approved this, as long as it was forgivable. This legislation was drafted by bond councils, so it has the, you know, all the official language that's needed to get the bond.
So you're comfortable with the way this is written?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Councilman Canoyah?
Chris, thank you, because I was going to ask that. So we're clear that these are forgivable at the end of the day?
It's forgivable as long as it meets, the work meets the requirement. So the, the city engineer, the water superintendent are clear on the requirements. Like the lines have to, replacement lines have to be, like, to private residents, public and private.
Okay.
So as long as it meets the specifications.
Thank you, Chris.
Which we, we can comply with.
Do we, or should we, or can we add anything in here, or leave it as is?
I would suggest you leave it as is. We sent this out to bond, bond council to look at it, to make sure that he was happy with it.
Yep.
And he informed us that he was, and he actually wrote this ordinance.
And he understands, though, it's our expectation that these will be forgivable.
Absolutely, that's why I exactly, that's why I gave it to him and I talked to him.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoyah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ciara?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, in 22057 is approved, seven to zero.
22R127 granting permission to use city property.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Canoyah?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gillette. Comments? Hearing none?
Council President, I'm just going to abstain.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Gonzalez is recusing herself on 22R127. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22R127 is approved, six to zero.
22R128 authorization to sign Third Amendment to purchase and sale agreement for property located at 357 Park Place, Wensaco, Rhode Island.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Canoyah?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez and Councilwoman Ciara?
Yep.
Yep. Comments?
Mr. President, this is what I believe Councilman Canoyah was alluding to. The buyers called me and asked me, because of the holidays and their religion, that they weren't able to do it on a certain date. So we acquiesced to them continuing it until the date here.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22R128 is, I'm sorry, yeah, 22R128 is approved, seven to zero.
22R129 appointed Margaret Jacob as a member of the Board of Assessment Review.
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gillette, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments? Hearing none?
Just want to thank them?
Yes, okay.
Ms. Jacob and the next one coming up?
Mr. St. Germain?
Mr. St. Germain, want to thank both of them for volunteering for this important job. So thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22R129 is approved, seven to zero.
22R130 reappointing Michael St. Germain as a member of the Board of Assessment Review.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Canoyah?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22R130 is approved, seven to zero.
22R131 authorizing the Public Works Director to apply for a loan with the Rhode Island Department of Health partnering with the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank for water meter replacement.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Comments?
Director?
Councilman Ward?
Yes, sir.
I see, I, I was able to locate the report from the Department of Health that lists out the various projects that are being planned, and I note that the, the report back in April that they prepared listed this water meter replacement.
Okay, can I, can I stop for one minute?
Sure.
On the agenda, the items are listed differently than the actual resolution. So if we're looking at 22R131 on the agenda, it says the water meter replacement, but if you, the actual resolution talks about the facade thickener repair. So just, if, if we're, if the three items are on the agenda, they're just in the wrong order. So if we are doing 22R131, it is, it is referring to the, um, the facade.
Well, if, if I may, then whoever made the motion to approve these, if we could combine all three, 131, 32, and 33, because they're all effectively doing the same thing.
That would be a good idea.
Who made the motion?
I think you.
I did?
You did.
No, then I'll move.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
The approval of resolutions 131, 132, and 133.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzala, uh, did you? No, but I.
I second the first. I second the first time, and.
And Councilman Canoyah?
So, my question was, and I go back to this, this list that I was able to obtain that lists out the projects that are being considered and approved, and they do indicate that the initial funding was from a supplemental SRF grant, and the water meter replacement is included. I didn't necessarily see the other items in there. Oh, no, the Manville Road Pump Station, I believe, is included in there. No, I'm not positive. But this was, this was back in April. Has it, has it been our intention for many months to apply? And had they approved these, or is this just an application process? Because they're indicating that they would be expected, for instance, the water meter replacement, they indicate in their report, a, under the column heading for estimated start date of July 2022 for the water meter replacement. And, and I guess I just don't understand, we had done the ARPA funding, and now it looks like concurrently we're applying for assistance or this loan?
Well, I can, I'll give you a little background if you, if you want. So.
Thank you.
Just to fast forward. So, yes, true, you, you did the ordinance for the meters, and the mayor, I have to give her a credit for this, really, she was insisting on securing these loans, if you will, but they're forgivable, they're, they're, and really, what they do is 40% of the project is paid for by this, you know, loan program, whatever you want to call it, as long as we match the other 60%, and we pay it, then, so essentially, we get 40% of this project for free, and there's no strings attached. I talked to the, the Infrastructure Bank, and I made sure that that was the case, and she reiterated multiple times that that is the case. So there are, you know, there are certain dates, criteria have to be met. You have to get the engineering done by the end of November, I believe. The project has to start before the end of the year, and so there, there is criteria, but you do get 40% is forgivable of the total project. So if you pony up the other 60. So that's significant. On, you know, on, on water meters, it's five millions, or 40% is two million. And so, you know, I mean, you know the math, so.
Yeah, no, I agree. We should absolutely take advantage of, of the program if they're going to offer 40%. Now, is it safe to assume that the 60% will also remain sourced out of our local ARPA funds?
Not necessarily. Well, the water meters, yeah, because we have an ordinance, right, affecting, saying that we'll, we've set aside four million, I believe, for this project. So, yeah, we could certainly come up with the three million from there, because that's already budgeted. But as far as the other two projects, I mean, there's flexibility. We could use the, the Enterprise Fund to, to pay those two. And these projects are very important, the Gravity Thickener and the Manville Road Pumping Station. This is part of a review recommendations by Jacobs on the Capital Improvement Plan, who operates our facility, our wastewater facility, and Weston and Sampson, who did a similar study identifying these as number one and two, you know, projects.
I, I also see, and I don't know, I, I don't always remember everything that's come before us, but I see that this list also includes for April 23 estimate of three and a half million for the Highland Park Water Tower replacement security system for assets. I'm not sure what that means, but it's a couple hundred thousand. Fairmount Street Water Main Replacement, South Main Street Water Main Replacement, Asylum Street Water Main Replacement, Loogee Street Water Main Replacement.
Yeah, those are not in the queue for us.
They're not in the queue.
No. Those are, you know, we put a list together of some.
Oh, okay, so you just.
These are the.
You sort of reserved a place on the list.
Exactly.
But not necessarily that these would be programs that would necessarily be undertaken. The one that intrigued me, though, was this SCADA for Distribution System, for 300,000. Frankly, that sounds inexpensive.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Is it a limited portion, or is it, is the thought about doing the whole thing?
Well, I think it's limited.
Okay.
At this point. And quite frankly, when we build our facility on Roy Avenue, we're going to have to put a system in there for the water department, a SCADA system.
Okay.
So, but these are the projects we're focusing now. Water meters are critical. Our water meters are failing badly. They're obsolete. We can't get parts for them. There's chronic problems. This has been talked about for five years, four years, and this will, this will be done. This project will be done. So if we can get $2 million right off the top.
Oh, no doubt about it. Absolutely.
That's a win.
It's a course to pursue. I just, I was trying to get myself an understanding of.
The Manville Road.
I was sure it was, and whether or not this is a, because it does say forgivable. It doesn't say, doesn't say forgiven.
Forgiven, right, yes, right.
That almost sounds like it's, it's somebody's discretion, which I don't think it really is.
Yeah. No, but there was multiple witnesses on the phone call.
But I mean, once you, once you commit and they agree, 40% to 40% because of qualifications, and it's not going to change.
Yeah, this, this is part of the big government giveaway, if you will.
Right.
You know, for infrastructure. But the Manville Road Pumping Station is critical. That needs to be upgraded. The, there's people now that have to go 20 feet in the ground to turn on different controls, if you will. This will be raised out of the ground, the controls. The, the actual cylinder, if you will, on Manville Road leaks water, so there's constantly water in there.
Just so I understand, there's a new building made to look somewhat like a house that was put as part of the new water treatment plant?
Yeah.
That's in front of the old water treatment plant?
Yes.
What is in that building?
Those are all, there's three pumps in there that supply the raw water to our new water treatment plant.
Okay. So what pump are you speaking of that?
This is the wastewater pump.
Oh, okay.
So this is the pump on Manville Road that you can't see, and there's a little fenced in area, a little further up the street. That's the other kind of water, the brown water.
Yeah, okay, that's to get rid of, okay.
And.
I was just.
There's 100,000 gallons of that brown water every day that gets pumped, and if that fails, your house is not flush.
It's just by referring to the water treatment facility, I thought it had to do with the water system, but in fact, it's not.
Yeah.
It's the wastewater system.
That's factually correct.
All set. Thank you.
Director, just, those, the 60% matching funds for the water meters, at least, can be used with, can be paid with ARPA?
We did ask that question, ARPA, and.
Chris.
Well, I, I just want to clarify. So there was one, the first conversation was, yes, we could come up with the 60% any way we wanted, like ARPA or from the Enterprise Funds, but then it was determined, no. So it's debt service. The 60% is debt. And we can't use ARPA funds for the 60%.
Oh, okay, yeah, because you're borrowing the money.
Yeah, lenders not going to give you money.
It's a debt service, you can't use.
The mayor was aware of that.
Yeah. By, by creating a debt ser, a debt, you can't use ARPA funds to pay off the debt service, and it would go beyond the date of the requirement to spend the funds in any case by going out as loan. So you forfeit that, which means you're freeing up the ARPA funds for other purposes.
Right, so we could amend. So I know the water meters is on the legislation for the ARPA funds.
So that'll have to be.
So then the 60% would come probably from Enterprise?
Right, it'll be part of debt service. It'll be a debt payment.
Okay. Councilman Canoyah?
Yeah, so I was just going to say, just to clarify that this is not all debt free. We are going to be left with about four and a half million dollars of new debt. 40% is going to be forgiven. The other 60% is about four and a half million of new debt that we're going to have in the books. Right? For, for example, the five million for the water meter, 40% is forgivable, that's two million, so we're still left with three million.
Correct.
Of new debt that we're going to have. I'm not saying it's the wrong thing to do, but I just want to be clear.
But what do you mean, new debt?
We're issuing bonds. We're taking on debt. Yes, we are.
Yeah, that's what these are.
Yes, we are. These are bonds.
No, no, we'll, we'll pay for it out of our Enterprise Fund.
Right, yes.
Well, the Enterprise, but it's, it's debt, and then the Enterprise Fund has to pay the debt service. But we're issuing debt.
What, what is our reserve in the Enterprise Fund right now? Do you know?
I don't know offhand.
No, no, but it, it doesn't matter, Steve. We may get cash from there, but at the end of the day, we're going to issue debt. Bondholders are going to give us money, okay? We're going to take that money, we're going to go fix the infrastructure, then we're going to pay the bondholders principal and interest for the next 20 years or whatever. Instead of doing $5 million that we owe the bondholders, we'll owe them three million on the meters because 20 of it, I mean, two million will be forgiven, correct?
Correct.
So we're going to have new debt. The city will have new debt, and we're going to pay interest on that. And we can have cash available to help pay for that, but we can't use the ARPA stuff. We had previously earmarked, I think, four million or something? Does that sound about right? Four million for meters?
I think five.
Four or five, we had four or five million earmarked in ARPA funds for meters. So instead of using the ARPA funds, we're going to issue debt, because you said the mayor thought this is a good idea, and it may well be, but we're still left with $3 million that we're going to pay interest on. You agree with that?
Yes.
And the reason.
Only on just the meters, though.
Just on the meters, and four and a half in total. And one of the reasons is, you can't forget the ARPA rules, but just as a, when you issue debt, you, you're not going to issue bonds to somebody and then say, "Here, I'm going to pay it off tomorrow with ARPA funds." What was the point of that, you know?
Is there, is there, you can't do a prepayment on those bonds? Most bonds you can't. Is this a bond?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure we're actually issuing a bond, so to speak. Aren't we simply borrowing or taking a loan from the Infrastructure Bank?
Yes.
But then, because they're lending us their bonded funds.
Right.
And so if we pay back the loan, it doesn't affect their bonding issue. They bonded the money in order to lend it for these purposes. So our agreement with them is simply a reven, a, a revenue guaranteed loan back to the Infrastructure Bank. I don't think it qualifies under the same terms as bonds.
Right, I agree. It's a loan.
So, so in terms of prepayment, we may have the, it's a, it's a fair question to ask the Infrastructure Bank if, if we would be eligible to use ARPA funds to do a prepayment on the loan, though I have a doubt, I have a sense that the answer would be no. But I don't, I don't know for certain.
But the bottom line is, we're going to have debt. And you can call it a loan, you can call it a bond, you can call it a chicken. We're going to have debt. You agree with that?
What is our cash reserve in the Infrastructure account right now?
I don't know that offhand.
Is it five million? Is it six million? Do we have a cash reserve? Let me, let me, let me answer, ask that question.
Well, I would say we don't have much because we used a lot of the infrastructure money for the water treatment plant. So we didn't have to borrow as much. We used the infrastructure funds.
When I asked how much we had, just not long ago, it was like eight or 10 million dollars or whatever.
dollars or whatever.
No, I know we have, user has more money.
Well, that's what I mean, user, whatever, but the point is, is that there's cash there. Am I, did I see something, or was it a mirage, or what? Do we have cash in user or, or whatever account? There's three accounts. Do we have cash?
But that cash is there, Steve, but it's also, that cash is also there to handle all the other stuff that comes along, so these are, these are targeted.
But trust me.
Yeah.
I've, I've been handling this for eight years, there's, there's plenty to handle what we have and, and the revenue that continues to come in. My point is, I don't care if it comes from user, infrastructure, wherever, bounce the accounts. My, my thing is, we don't borrow any money. It gets paid from user or wherever, whatever slush account it is, move it. That's what I'm, the point I'm trying to make, I'm not, we're not borrowing money.
Well, these resolutions, Steve.
We're not borrowing money on anything.
Steve, these resolutions are to borrow money.
Well, just to.
These are to borrow money.
Would you like to table it, and we can have another discussion with the mayor?
My, my conversation with this person, and you were there, is they, if we put up the cash for the, for the 60%, okay, then we're not borrowing any money. We borrow temporarily, you ought to do the project, but I mean, if it gets paid off, you're not borrowing anything.
If that's the agreement, but.
If that's the agreement.
Yeah, I.
Not borrowing any money.
I won't dispute it, and by the way, you had nine, last year end. Last year end, you had 9.8 million dollars in cash.
And, and, you know, let, let's not mince words with user has this and infrastructure has this, we move money around all the time. All I know is there's enough money to, to, to pay for these projects, that's what I know.
But do they allow a prepayment?
Yes, they do, absolutely.
I don't know about, I think that's how they make their money by.
Mr. President, I suggest we table so we can get clarification on this.
Yeah, let's.
I get nervous when people start saying they move money around all the time.
When they first, when they first conveyed the program, that's how, like, they had said we could use ARPA funds or whatever funding we had available for the 60%.
For the record, we had 9.8 million dollars in the bank.
A different.
Okay, so look.
Only 2.8 was, was unrestricted reserve.
Yeah, so.
Well, thank you.
All right, so look, Steve, what you're saying is true, and.
Yes, it is true.
Hang on a minute, let me finish. What you're saying is true, and Chris just acknowledged that. You guys had a discussion with them, and they said, "Yep, you could use ARPA funds or whatever, or, or other cash to pay it off." She had a subsequent conversation that suggests otherwise. So there's a, there's a diff, there's, there's a question here, at the very least. So I'm going to make a motion to table for the next meeting.
Okay.
So motion to table 131, 132, and 133.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Susie to table 22R131, 132, and 133. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the three resolutions are tabled to the next regular meeting.
22R134, authorizing the cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
This abatement is in the total amount of $4,195.38, I believe.
Thank you, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22R134 is approved, seven to zero. Councilman Ward?
There being no further business before this body, I motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman, I mean, sorry, Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Canoia to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and this meeting is adjourned at 9:13.